Great. Good morning, everyone. Well, welcome to our last board meeting of the year for the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Yeah, I need to do a happy dance in cartwheels back here for Thursday, December 2nd, 2021. We will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner Skaggs.
Great. I'd like to call on Commissioner Burrow for our invocation today.
Good morning. It's only 51 as we're coming in. It kind of felt like spring, but I think we have to work that out. So today I thought I'd go with an advocate team. So we're in the season. The word advocate comes from the Latin and means coming. Its purpose is to look forward to the... Look at that. Went to crosswalk.com. I have different things on here. Pray for attentiveness to what truly matters. Pray for opportunities to learn something new regularly. Pray for discernment of how God would like you to set your priorities and the ability to focus on... Pray for the grace to be able to rest, become aware of God's presence, and enjoy it. Form relationships with other people, bond of a loving community. Pray for imaginative imagination that helps you... Pray for joy and a sense of humor. Help for you and... Pray for a clear mind and the ability... Openness to the Holy Spirit's...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. We are on to item five of our agenda, public comment related to agenda items only. Do we have any public comment here today for agenda items? Seeing none, we are on to item six, closed session. Call Commissioner Steck for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to go into closed session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act to consult with the county's attorney regarding trial settlement strategy concerning labor arbitration. The county's attorney has advised the board that an open meeting on this issue would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation settlement position of the county.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner Breevy. We need a roll call vote.
Madam Chair, just one technical correction. Unfortunately, that blurb was from our last closed session. This actually has to do with... It's my fault. I admit it. This has to do with trial and settlement strategy, but not in connection with labor.
That's what I meant to say.
All right. We are in closed session. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll for that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated by Vice Chair Steck, Commissioners Skaggs...
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LaGranne.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McCallum.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Norrell.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Upstein.
No. Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bulter. Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. We are now...
I'll turn it over to you. All right. We are in closed session, so we'll ask those who need to leave the room to go ahead and go and ask Linda Howell to guide us...
I just need to get the door open.
Guide us through it. To their seats. So we're going to move on to item seven, our agenda, consent agenda, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Burrow for a motion. Moved by Commissioner Burrow, support by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on the consent agenda today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Skaggs...
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LaGranne.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McCallum.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bulter.
Yes. All right. So as a result of the closed session, we now have Resolution 118, which would have been in your packet. So I would like to add that to the agenda. Does anyone have an objection to adding that so we can move that forward? Okay. Well, can I get a motion and a support and then we'll...
Make the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Steck.
Well, I was going to make the motion. Is it on the agenda?
We just added... Yeah, we added it, and then I need a motion in a second.
So I was going to move to approve Resolution Number 118 at today's date, which is in the material submitted. But this changed. The last semicolon and the last conjunction is eliminated.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner Skaggs. Questions or comments? Commissioner Antor?
Yeah, Commissioner Womack was kind of messing with me accidentally. I put the agenda back in the packet.
Oh. All right. Any other... Commissioner Ponstein?
So I am going to be voting no on this. You know, you look at the crisis of opioids. Lobbyists have been paying off, people in Congress. The families that own these companies have hid the money, so it's protected. Doctors have gotten away. Distribution people have gotten away. Never in the conversation once, but what is the value of the human suffering and the pharmaceutical firms and... FDA's loaded with former pharmaceutical executives that coddled the pharmaceutical firms, and they are just getting away. Little peanuts and the crumbs that are left over after lawyers get paid off. We protect the pharmaceutical... The agreement we had... Johnson &amp; Johnson hasn't said they're going to stop making opioids. They're going to still make them, but they've agreed for the next 10 years they won't dis... If they were bad for America, what makes you think they're going to be safe for a third world country? What makes you think that those drugs somehow won't find a way to get to a country and then back over our borders, continuing this ongoing problem? This is nothing more than a slap in the hand from the pharmaceuticals. Time local governments, government officials, elected officials finally stand up and stand up and stop hiding behind the thing is, well, we've got to settle because we don't want to pay more lawyer's fees, and we really need this money right now. We've got enough money. The taxpayers have been funding this fight for a long time, and they're going to continue to fight it because it's not going away. But this settlement is nothing but a slap in the hand, and I'm finally going to stand up, and we've got to put a value on human life. That's what's lacking in this country.
Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. While I shared Commissioner Ponstein's opinions and reached a different conclusion on my vote, we are... You know, again, if you haven't seen half the billboards out there, they're all about gambling because we can gamble now. I could gamble right now if I wanted to. It'd be beautiful, but I got to be paying attention. But at the end of every commercial, it says, and if you have already lost your house and all your belongings, we've got an 800 number for you to call it because gambling can be addictive, you know? We've got all kinds of warnings on alcohol. We have all kinds of... You know, but... And we tax these things in a piddly kind of way, you know? So again, the solution here unfortunately isn't litigation, you know? As some... I don't know if I can disclose this, but some disclosed they weren't attorneys during closed session. Well, I am an attorney, and I think once you get the attorneys to the table, then you've probably lost the battle. And we know DC and Lansing is filled with attorneys. Most of them are lobbyists, whatever they call themselves. The system is broken. The system needs to be fixed. The system needs to pay for itself. So, you know, again, with the pharmaceutical companies, they can't lobby on opioids, but they're going to lobby so much against fair taxation on the damage they cause. So I will vote yes, but good thing I have a mask on today so I don't smell my yes vote because this is just terrible. Again, and yes, this system is beyond broken, and the billions of dollars spent on lobbying is an indicator of that brokenness. And the CEO for these companies are probably going to get a bonus because they got a successful settlement. Big old bonus in addition to their golden parachute. Ain't America great? I'm done. I could go on, but I'll be...
Commissioner Womack.
Yes. I agree with both commissioners that even more need to be... I'll be voting yes. I believe it's a start, and I hope it's just the beginning of what we can do with some retribution for what has happened from these opioid companies. 2% overdose and opiate deaths since 2000, which helped increase overall overdoses in the United States to 117%. Talk about people who became addicted because doctors overprescribed. And once they couldn't get those prescriptions, once those doctors were getting in trouble, they began to get it from the street. So there were people went to jail having one pill in their car. So we have people who have criminal records. We... So the damage that is doing to the lives of these people that have been on opioids, this is something that's going to cure their lives. So I'm just glad that we're starting somewhere. Wish more could be done, but we have to start somewhere, so I will be voting yes. And I hope that there is some type of relief coming for those who were taken advantage of for financial gain. And with 200% increase in overdoses, there's no way distributors did not see the increase in the opiates being bought. So I believe they need to be penalized. Many people are in jail for conspiracy to sell drugs, even if they never sold drugs, if they benefited anyway. So I see these distributors as liable. I'll be voting yes.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to be voting no as well. Not that this is not a big problem with the opioids. I just think we're... It's talked about in closed session. I think we're going after the wrong people. And by not allowing us to go after who I think are the real culprits, that would be the doctors and hospitals, clinics. We're almost rewarding them by not going after them for their bad behavior. And I just think, tagged onto that, we're sending a mixed signal because we have these distribution vending machines with this medicine that will help you if you're being... You know, if you're ODing on opioids. And to me, that's a mixed signal. You know, it's almost saying, go ahead and use opioids. Make sure you go to this vending machine, so if you OD, we've got you covered. I think it's more at the... Not the distribution level, but on the street level at these clinics and stuff where they've overprescribed. Seems like they're getting away with something here in my mind. It seems like that's where the problem is. The rest of it's the free market, but that's the only reason I'll be voting against this. I appreciate the time.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I... These organizations have billions, trillions, trillions...
Commissioner. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bulter. What I understand is before us is whether or not Kent County participates in a settlement agreement that's already been negotiated with some of the parties in some very complex, multi-party litigation. So we're looking at one small piece of a very complex issue, and I don't think there's any question across this table that all of us are offended by what has transpired over the course of the past years in the opioid crisis. There is lots of blame to go around across the entire system, but a piece of litigation is a unique little process in its own, and that's really what's before us. Not whether or not we agree or don't agree with whether or not the system was bad, whether or not it has impacted, whether or not it's hurt our communities. It's just a small issue before us on whether or not this particular component of this settlement is one that we approve. Now, there's no question that litigation can have an impact on public policy, but it is probably the most ineffective, poor way of making and setting public policy. That's what legislation's about. And frankly, whether we settle this or whether we try this, my guess is that at the end of the day, the impact on public policy of this litigation is relatively insignificant. So those of you that are concerned about public policy, let's stay focused on public policy. This is something different. So I'm going to support it in part because I look at the overall analysis of the benefit of continuing versus not continuing, the economic impact of it, the potential cost to us, the other costs for us to potentially have to be involved as a singular entity going forward. If we don't participate, all suggest to me the most effective thing for us now, and the best for the county is to go ahead and approve this.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. Well, it's hard to follow that up. I'm in complete agreement with Commissioner Steck and with many of the other commissioners that have gone before me. This is obviously a scourge on people, and these companies, as the documentation from the lawsuits have shown, understood what they were selling. Yeah, there's a lot of problems with our regulatory system, problems that need to get fixed, and I hope that everyone will work on that. You know, no amount of money is ever going to be enough, but this settlement forces the drug companies to pay an historic amount. This is the highest ever for a pharmaceutical case. It's only dwarfed by the tobacco settlement. So I don't think $46 billion is chicken feed. I think that the money that comes down to us, which looks to be half a million dollars for 18 years, will allow us to put in place some very serious treatment and recovery services that are going to help real lives. So if we're here to really impact real people's lives, I think we should support this settlement. In addition, I think, as Paul mentioned, Michigan has an extremely unique legal framework here and that actually suing pharmaceutical companies for this kind of behavior in Michigan is not allowed. I believe that was the brainchild of one Bill Shute. The... So we don't have a bird in the hand here. I mean, we have a bird in the hand here, but there's not two birds somewhere else. If we don't take this settlement, we're going to hunt, you know, rainbow-colored unicorns. So this is something that will affect people's lives directly. Let's get the money. Let's be very wise about how we spend it, and let's get to work on helping people. Thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is a legitimately kind of tough choice represented by... I think Commissioners Ponstein and Bolkowski laid out that tough choice really well. And I'm just sitting here thinking, you know, a no vote is the Fabreeze on a stinky yes.
Love your analogies. Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues who have conveyed the righteous anger that should be directed on these companies for the harm they've done to our communities and to families across this county and this country. And also my own opinion that I will be voting yes on this stinky yes, and I'm glad I have a face mask to cover the smell. My main comment is actually, as these dollars come into the community, I would just hope that we engage those who have been on the front lines on this issue to ensure that we are maximizing its effectiveness, engaging with groups like the Families Against Narcotics, who have seen how this epidemic has hurt them directly, engaging with our healthcare network to find out what are the best ways for us to mitigate the opioid crisis in Kent County, to make sure that these dollars go as far as they can. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Real quick, first time in my 21 years that I've heard rainbow-colored unicorns and Fabreeze while we're discussing a...
In the same meeting.
A topic. And the other thing that strikes me is I think we've almost taken a vote without a roll call here, and it kind of concerns me. I'll wait for the roll call before I vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Womack for a second time.
One thing I wanted to point out when we talk about the policy versus the litigation, the way it ties together is the money that these companies have accumulated from selling these uprising opiates has allowed them to buy lobbyists who buy politicians. So there's been a lot of policies, a lot of laws changed that allowed this, a lot of oversight that was overlooked in the regulations to allow this to climb. So this conspiracy is beyond what any of us have time to study right now, but some of us who have been studying it because our neighborhoods have been hit so hard by opiates, we have to be a voice for our constituents that want to see everybody involved paying some way. Doctors have been locked up. They have been going to jail. Local law enforcement are able to get more closer to the local clinics and the doctors, and our AG is able to do some things in Michigan. But when you're talking about these national distributors, they're almost untouchable. So it's time that they be touched, in my opinion. And I'm glad to be able to voice what I believe my constituents would want me to voice about the importance of these lobbyists being bought.
Commissioner Antor for a second time.
Last time. Thank you, Chair. This is something over the last couple of years that came up. I had some concerns when it did, but it sounds like some of this money that we recovered is going to be used to help mitigate the issues with opioids. That might mean a new clinic being set up, something along those lines. And a few years ago, I think it was Medmart, they came into Grand Rapids to set up, along with Cherry Street Health, to treat people for this addiction. They were completely kept out of the process. They didn't get the accreditation through, I think, Network 180. I can't remember the exact chain of command there, but they were shut out. And I questioned that because Cherry Street is just getting bombarded every day. They've got lines going out the doors. And I always wondered why Medmart was shut out of the process. And when I asked them, why did you come to Grand Rapids if you didn't already have the approval to treat Medicaid, I think it was, they said, we've never had a problem ever setting up. And they... I went through the clinics, beautiful place. They were ready to go. They said, I've never ran into this before where they got shut out in an area that really needed it. So I still would like to get to the bottom of that, why Medmart was kicked out of town. And now we're going to probably try to build another clinic to do exactly what they're doing. It's just a question. Alan, you probably... You weren't here when this all happened. I do have a question about that particular scenario.
Can we do that at another time, though, and just...
Oh, for sure. No, I know.
Yeah, because that'll be when we get ready to...
As long as we make note of that and try to get some clarity. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bulter. So I'm hearing that I shouldn't vote no because litigation is the savior of all of this. Trust me, our legal system is part of the problems. These pharmaceuticals have been hiding behind laws. I bet you that their lawyers are paid 5-10 times the amount of our lawyers. That gentleman that's sitting in the jail for selling two opioid pills, I bet you he didn't have a lawyer, and the lawyer that was representing was making 5-10 times that. The families of our veterans and people who have lost lives to opioid addictions, I bet you their lawyers, in many cases, were probably a public defender going against a pharmaceutical lawyer that's making multimillion dollars to protect these people under the guise of our legal system. And if our laws are wrong, they're wrong, but they're wrong because the lawyers for the pharmaceuticals have lobbied and paid off people to get these laws in place. So if we're saying that we've got to vote yes on this because the legal system is our salvation, we've got a big wake-up call.
Any other questions or comments before we take a vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 118 as amended, Commissioners Skaggs...
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LaGranne.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
No.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
It's going to smell nice. No.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
No.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bulter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yeas, three nays. The motion passes. Resolution 118 as amended is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8A of our agenda, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Morgan for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move Resolution 119, additional 911 surcharge appropriate.
Moved by Commissioner...
Support.
Support by Burrow? Sorry, I didn't hear. Support by Commissioner Burrow. Questions or comments on Resolution 119 today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 119, Commissioners Skaggs...
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LaGranne.
Yes.
Hennessy. McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bulter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 119 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to 8B, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Skaggs.
I'd like to move Resolution 120A of today's date from the Health Department for a full-time animal shelter technician.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner Womack. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Coleman.
We had a great discussion in legislative meeting, um, on this topic. It's split because, uh, I had, you know, asked to split off the, uh, what was listed as, uh, sixty thousand dollars to solve a pandemic cat problem at the animal shelter. I think in the discussion in LHR and SENS, we've gotten further clarity that this is not just for that, which case I'll actually switch my, my vote, uh, to be in favor of this position, given it's for the general staffing needs of the animal shelter. But I, I do think, uh, it, it shouldn't take a, uh, Robert's Rules of Order type, uh, you know, system to get clarity like that, uh, in advance. We should have those details, the actual details, uh, for ourselves and for the public who's seeing what we're voting on. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 120A, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 120A is adopted.
All right, we're on eight C, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Skaggs again.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 120B of today's date from the Health Department for various non-feline oriented staffing needs.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner-
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments on the non-feline resolution? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 120B, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl. Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 120B is adopted.
All right, we're on to eight D, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I move Resolution 121 of today's date, funding for 2022 budget position request.
Support.
Commissioner Teal, support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on 121? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 121, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 121 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have three more. Eight E, Commissioner Hennessy.
I move adoption of Resolution 122.
Moved by Commissioner Hennessy, support by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on 122 today? Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to follow Commissioner Bukowski's footsteps and, uh, I'm gonna have to abstain from this because, uh...
Got it. Any other, Commissioners Stuck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. My understanding is that this is essentially reinstating, uh, Rockford into the system, uh, after some changes were made or required. So this is not a new addition, it's just reinstating.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioners Skaggs.
Uh, just to follow up on that, I also, um, you know, asked this question in committee, but, uh, the other two major, uh, emergency ambulance companies are already, uh, have this status.
Any other questions or comments today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 122, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Uh, yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod. Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl. Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Abstaining.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have eighteen yays, zero nays, one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 122 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to eight F, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Bukowski for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move, um, Resolution 123 of today. The Low Income Household Water Assistance Program for 2122, which was, um, approved out of finance but a few hours ago. Support.
Moved by Commissioner, who supported, sorry?
Green.
Moved by Commissioner-
Right.
Bukowski, support by Commissioner Green. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 123, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. McLeod. Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl. Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 123 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to our last resolution, eight G, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 124 of today's date, Spectrum Health reimbursement for West Michigan Vaccine Clinic.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Hennessy.
I wasn't at finance this morning. Can we have a brief explanation of, you know, a little bit more information on this?
Sure. Jeff can provide an update on that.
Morning Commissioners, here. So this, um, as you know, we, we leased the DeVos Place Convention Center for a mass vaccination clinic back in January. So it's a consortium between originally three hos- or two hospitals and the county, um, and ended up just being Spectrum Health and Kent County. And in that contract, there was a piece for any potential revenue sharing if the insurance proceeds exceeded the cost, which happened to be the case in this, uh, situation. So we, um, got our expenses repaid and then split a share of the revenues, uh, in. Settlement of that agreement.
Do you have any more questions, Commissioner Hennessy?
So, this, this is to, um... This is to receive money? I haven't had a chance to read this. This is to receive money. Oh, very good. And what, how will we use this?
Goes back to the cares.
Goes back to the cares. Okay, good.
Commissioner Coleman.
So what was the, you, you had asked how-
Commissioner Ponstein, just a second.
I couldn't hear the response to Carol's last point.
Carol, you had asked, we're receiving it or we're, we're expending it and, and we're receiving the information, the, the funds.
And where does it go?
And it goes back to the cares money.
Jeff, why don't you explain how that transition works? Because we have to spend the cares money by the end of the year.
And I can, yeah, and, and, yeah. Go for it.
Okay.
Fire away, Jeff.
Okay. It gets a little complicated. As you stated, the cares money needs to be spent by the end of the year. We also had a FEMA, uh, reimbursement request submitted last September. Um, so what we're gonna do is free up some of those FEMA funds because we don't anticipate that'll be settled by year end. That gives us, uh, the freedom to use up the remaining cares funds by the end of the year so we don't have to pay back any funds. So it's a little bit of a shuffling of the funding, but we're doing it to maximize all of our resources.
Commissioner Ponstein, can I, can I, can I call on people in order? Sorry. Commissioner Coleman had a question, and then I'll call on you.
I think my question's quick, and I think Jeff answered it in that, so this is the only partner in the vaccine clinic we're expecting any funding from?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Ponstein.
So, so I guess, Mike, we have this arrangement. We got billions of dollars from the federal government to combat that. We've got a nonprofit that's making money off the vaccine, and all the costs were covered. So now there's a profit, and we feel that they deserve a cut of that. I mean, there's nothing else in the county that's more important than sharing profits on a system that we're serving taxpayers, and it's a nonprofit hospital that somehow that there's profits that are gonna be shelled out. It just doesn't make sense.
There's confusion. Jeff, can you explain how the, how everything was structured?
So the agreement called for, obviously, they, they submitted claims to the insurance companies, uh, for the shots administered. It was about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand shots. Um, the total revenues received from the insurance companies after discounts was about eight-point-six million. So they completely paid for our total cost, which was about seven-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. And then our share of the expenses was just under sixteen percent, so we got sixteen percent of everything after expenses.
That we're getting back.
Correct.
But Spectrum's getting money too.
Correct.
What are they, I mean, they're a nonprofit that's been reimbursed for all their costs. There's money left over. Shouldn't that be returned to the taxpayers?
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, as you know, I've had a problem with, with what happened back in the day when we decided to use DeVos Place. Um, I thought it was paying for the Titanic when we could have used the speedboat, um, because I didn't think we're ever gonna get close to the vaccination numbers and so on and so forth. But the charge that they were, I think it was twelve thousand dollars a day that they were going to charge us for building that we own, um, that really stunk to me. And, and the reason why we get into spots like that is because this CARES Act money, it's, it's like Monopoly money to people. We've got all this money. All of a sudden, DeVos Place saying, yeah, we'll take twelve thousand dollars a day. While up the road, we have the Delta Flex willing to do it for nothing, and in fact, they actually put together something over a weekend to handle all the area veterans in and out of Kent County, and they, they did it for free. Um, so this is an example of having a bunch of money that we gotta figure out how to spend, and in that process, we're spending, uh, in a way that really isn't doing justice for our constituents, the taxpayers. I, I think we could have done a lot better job. I'm glad that DeVos Place eventually came down on their prices, and we end up paying pennies on a dollar for their original estimate. But that whole thing, to me, kind of stunk, and it's, it's, that's what happens when we get flooded with money, um, that nobody really knows how to spend. We tend to use it to make rich richer sometimes. And I just wanted to point that out. I don't ever want to have to go through that again where we're, we seek out one building for something like, let's do the math next time and see what other assets we have. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Coleman.
Chair, I thought I understood this one walking in this morning. Let me say what I think I'm voting on, and correct me if I'm wrong. So, so Spectrum Health is sending one-point-two million dollars to Kent County, and Kent County is not sending any dollars to Spectrum Health.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick, uh, question. When this was set up in the contract, was Spectrum reimbursed for, uh, fees for service? Was that the basis of the reimbursement?
Correct. Yeah, with the insurance companies, correct.
So they have a, as a hospital or an ambulance or anything else, they, they can charge for a fee for service, right? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Chair. So having been involved in a lot of those negotiations, uh, at the time of that process, uh, my recollection is that the, the addressing of whether or not and how much we would ultimately receive or whether it's partnership would ultimately receive in insurance reimbursement was built into the original agreement, wasn't it? We just didn't know how much we would get.
Correct. They originally anticipated they'd have to give half a million shots to break even on the, on the facility or on the, on the, um, and ended up not being the case.
But again, the fact that there would be insurance submissions, that there would be some insurance payback for the cost of this was built into the original agreement with the partnership, with an understanding that depending upon what we actually get in, uh, we'll be doing a distribution.
Correct.
And that's what this is.
Correct.
Yeah.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, and so that fee for service was our usual and customary charge, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, just, and as a note, um, as I vilified the corporate, uh, system in America moments ago, um, the nonprofit system is, is misnamed. It's, we're non-taxable. Again, I, I run a nonprofit, um, um, outside of here. And if you do not have net revenue, which in the, in the corporate world is called profit, in the nonprofit world, we call it net revenue, you go bankrupt and you go out of business. The bumper sticker is no margin, no mission. And so as Commissioner Morgan was, was pointing out, you, you are allowed at times, you know, some of your revenue can be fee for service, and there is a net revenue which then must be spent on your mission. If you're lucky. If you're lucky. And if you're not lucky, you go, you go bankrupt, and nonprofits go bankrupt all the time. Again, they should be, we should be called non-taxable entities. So, and the good and the bad of it is, and, and we, I'll save my exposition about the American healthcare system for another day. Spectrum Health as a nonprofit has net revenue near half a billion dollars a year. And then they invest that in other things related to their mission. So they have a lot different net revenue than disability advocates or Rockford Ambulance, I would assume. But all that being said, having a profit is actually a requirement for a charitable, non-taxable entity. And so the good and the bad of this is, yes, way too much money thrown around. I believe as a community, we did a great job with the vaccine clinic downtown. And, and, yeah, was it perfect? No. So I don't know if my comments meant anything, but, um, yeah, we gotta watch all kinds of misnomers and, and whatever about how these things work. And their nonprofit status is what it is.
Any other questions? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just, I want to echo Commissioner Bukowski's sentiments. There, there are parts of our, of our tax system, of our legal system, of our healthcare system that we cannot control. But what's in front of us is, while started off with a pretty bad agreement, turned into a great story for West Michigan. I mean, I remember many of us walking through DeVos Place and hearing from our healthcare providers, our health department about the need, our ability to get vaccine doses into Kent County so we can get our constituents and our, uh, neighbors protected from COVID, was reliant on our ability to get shots in arms. And having the central location and the infrastructure that was needed as infrastructure was being built allowed us to get people vaccinated quicker and allowed us to build out the infrastructure sooner. And in the end, this was a partnership that was paid for through FEMA reimbursement, through insurance reimbursement, and was a phenomenal partnership. And I am glad that we're receiving, that agreement is coming back and being honored as we're receiving these funds that we're then going to be repurposing to ensure that those vulnerable families who were displaced as a result of COVID were safely housed during the pandemic so that they themselves were protected. And, uh, you know, I, again, I think we can, we can debate the larger issues know, I, again, I think we can, we can debate the larger issues that we, as commissioners, cannot directly control, but I see this as a, as a vote to tie what was a great partnership that allowed us to keep constituents in this county safe. Thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
I make one quick correction. We originally did apply to FEMA for reimbursement for the clinic's expenses, but because the overall clinic itself made money, we had to withdraw that application, and we got paid back from Spectrum for those costs.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
I just want to take this opportunity, not only to thank our Board of Commissioners, but mainly our staff, but our Board of Commissioners and, and everybody that's part of operations here, and making sure we hire the best staff and department heads. But our staff, when they went into this, they were getting beat up by the public, they were getting beat up by even some commissioners, but they're paid to have projections, and they're paid to make sure that they're taking us into the best situations, and people had a good reason to have some doubt about the DeVos Place being used for this, and the price that was incurred. But our, our staff took us into that with the projections that we would be able to save lives, we'd be able to make a giant curb in this pandemic, vaccinating over 2,000 people, going in there on days where there were hundreds of people coming in a day, and then for us not to lose money on this, and to have money come back at the end of the year that can go even further to help in the county, I just thought it'd be a good time to just thank our staff for some great work, and, and Kent County, all of our citizens for participating in it.
Any other questions or comments on this? I have one clarification, Jeff, I just want you to make. So, it was my understanding that the vaccine was provided for free, the actual vaccine. The administration of the vaccine, there's a cost, because you're paying a health professional to do so, or, or covering the cost of some of that. So, that is the piece that was billed to insurance, which was then put into this fund that is then paying to recover the, or to cover the cost of the clinic, and then whatever was additionally left is coming back to us. Is that correct?
I'm not 100% sure on what they actually bill. I believe you are correct. I didn't get behind the Spectrum Health billing, but they billed allowable expenses for, for the use of the clinic. They had staff there each and every day. You're exactly right, they had administrators overseeing the clinics. It was definitely an allowable billing on their part.
Okay, great. And I will be abstaining due to my employer. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 124, Commissioners Skaggs...
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
No.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Epstein.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yeas, two nays, and one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 124 is adopted.
Wonderful. We are on to item nine of our agenda, public comment related to any general county matter. Do we have any member of the public here wishing to speak on a general county matter? Seeing none, we are on, oh, oh, our Parks Foundation Director, Mr. Sam Moore.
This is the last public comment, correct?
So, Sam Moore, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Just wanted to take a quick moment to recognize the chair's last meeting. Congratulations on three long years. So, wanted to thank you for your leadership and wishing the best for the leadership moving forward. And then also, I'd be remiss if I didn't take a second publicly to acknowledge Kim and her upcoming retirement. She has, many of you know, served three very different county clerks.
[laughing]
In Terry, Mary, and Lisa. Maybe we'll rate them later, Kim, that'd be fun.
Easy now, she's not retired yet.
I, I just wanted to thank you. I know there's a lot of residents that have depended on you. You've been a staple here in the county, and as you move on in this next venture, that has always been the most important to you, your family, and as a, a mom and a grandma, I wish you the best of luck. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Woo! Any other public comments today? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to item 10, a special presentation by the chair. Damn it, Sam, he tried to steal my thunder. Madam Clerk, would you please join me?
Actually, I'm just going to turn it over to the new chair. Norrell. Thank you. Yeah, Sam, thanks for stealing our thunder here. Many of you may already know, but for some of you, Sam's comment may have brought to light the first time you have learned that Kim Perry is our Senior Administrative Assistant, my assistant, is retiring this year. Her last day is December 23rd, and for 28 years, for over 28 years, she has been a consistent face for so many of us, including the public. Dependable and reliable are truly understatements when you think of Kim. She, five years ago, made my transition into this office easier than I could have ever imagined, and she has loved her work with a genuine pride for every single year that she's been here. I truly don't, I don't know what I'm going to do when she's gone, and I mean that. So, if anybody's got any ideas. But as much as she has loved her work, she loves her family much, much more. And her decision to retire is that foundation, that's her decision, the basis for her decision, so that she can spend and dedicate the time that she's given to the county, to the citizens, back to her family. She will forever be a member of Team Lions, a very elite group. And if you will allow me, indulge me, please, I would like to just read this proclamation quick. Please come. Again, she has always been behind the scenes, at the, at the seat, but never the center of attention. And as you can see, as you can see, this is how she prefers it. A proclamation by the Kent County Board of Commissioners, whereas Kimberly A. Perry began her career with Kent County Clerk, Register of Deeds Office on February 28th, 1994, and whereas for over 27 years, Kim Perry has served with dedication and distinction as the Assistant to the County Clerk Register, and has been a valued resource to our county's elected officials, department leadership and staff, and its residents alike. And whereas in that time, Kim Perry has worked alongside three county clerks, Terry Lynn Land, Mary Holland Rake, and myself, Lisa Posthumus Lyons, 14 board delegations, and 10 board chairs, and hundreds of coworkers. Whereas throughout her tenure, Kim Perry has witnessed much change throughout Kent County, including the transforming skyline of the city of Grand Rapids, right from the windows of the county administration building, where she has met such change by being the consistent friendly face and voice to those seeking public records and documents maintained and archived by our clerk. And whereas her ever-present work in the Office of County Clerk has provided her with well-deserved pride from the essential preparation and documentation of minutes of each and every Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting, to creating and distributing the biannual Kent County Directory that has become an essential tool for so many leaders and residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes and thanks Kimberly A. Perry for her dedication and service to Kent County, and wishes her the very best retirement in which she will surely enjoy traveling and spending irreplaceable time with her family, especially her children, Lindsay and Caitlin, and her grandchildren, Ella and Lillian. And be it further resolved that this day, Thursday, December 2nd, 2021, is hereby proclaimed Kim Perry Day in Kent County. In honor of her many contributions to the Board of Commissioners and our County Clerk, Register of Deeds, and the citizens of Kent County. Signed by Chair Bolter and myself.
Woo! Do you want to say?
She says thank you.
That's all I can say.
I also want to thank Commissioner Ponstein for helping us make arrangements to have fellowship after the meeting. For those of you who can stay, we have cake available. Can we have cake?
[laughing]
So, again, thank you for indulging me during this time. I don't even know what more I could do to give you an appropriate send-off into your retirement. You are, you are truly valuable and will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. All right, we're on to item 11, Administrator's Report. Tough to follow that.
I know, I know, maybe I should just pass.
It's all kind of downhill after this, but anyway, Al, go for it.
Yeah, just a couple items. So, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we are starting our quadrant meetings with local units of government in January. We have four hosts to kick us off for the, our first half of the year. So, Cedar Springs, Grand Rapids Township, Plainfield Township, and Gaines Township will be our hosts for the first round. And again, we will invite commissioners, elected officials, those who would like to just come along and rub shoulders with our cities, villages, and townships, and let them know more about what we're doing, hear about what they're doing, and learn more about potential partnerships. So, we're looking forward to kicking that off. Also, I, I wanted to introduce a couple of my students. Many of you know I teach at Grand Valley evenings once in a while. So, Rommel Jean-Pierre in back, raise your hand. There's a Grand Valley student all the way from Haiti. And then we have Genevieve Mary, who's sitting right directly across from me, and both are in the Public Administration nonprofit program at Grand Valley, and they're...
Woo, thanks for being here.
Doing a little job shadowing today, so it'll be interesting to read the write-up. So, so, one of the other things, when we started, one of the things I think has been on my mind a lot, is I think about how county government works, and local government works, is how do we truly engage our stakeholders, you know, as we work to make Kent County the best place we can. And so, I did ask Lori to start on putting, or asked a number of our department heads to, just give us lists of your stakeholders, and we'll organize them by different stakeholder groups. I think we have over 90,000 so far. So, as we look to do things like get public input on ARPA spending and other things, DEI work and all the other things we'll be, we'll be about, we have kind of a sounding board that we're developing that could be used for surveying focus groups, or whatever type of method we use to, to get input. Also, we will, oops, keep forgetting the mic. We'll, also, we're working on a recommendation to bring, well, a recommendation for an ARPA consultant, that'll come in January. We did our last interview yesterday, so we think we'll be able to show you a good value add, especially when you look at the fact that the backend requirements of ARPA are quite a bit more complex and difficult than CARES Act. I think we're in a good place with ARPA. Yes, we haven't spent money yet, but again, the mission of ARPA was different than CARES. CARES was get out there, spend the money quick, quick, and with ARPA, it's been make transformational investments so that they keep paying off in the future. Plus, the transportation bill just got adopted. There are some things I think that either, either we'll combine and have two sources, or maybe use one or the other for, so I think that timing ended up very much in our favor as well. And then finally, well, I guess two more quick things. I did want to thank the whole board. I continue to get cards from you, and just the floral arrangements and cards, your expressions during, after the passing of my parents, our, my, my family holds those dearly. And I also want to thank the board chair. So, Mandy, I think has done a great job as board chair, and for my transition into this role as county administrator, worked extremely hard to make that seamless, and I'll always appreciate that as well. So, thank you very much. And I guess Merry Christmas. This is the last time we'll be together. So, thank you.
All right, we're on to official reports. Do we have official reports today? Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to briefly, I won't, I won't speak too long, but wanted to give the board an update about the work of the broadband subcommittee. Have been having some good productive conversations with, with, with Al and Jenny, and with Vice Chair Steck and Chair Bolter about the way forward with that process. And we've put together a plan, a draft plan for how that's going to proceed in the next year. But in the immediate, immediate term, what I wanted to let everybody know is we're kind of working to reorganize that subcommittee into two separate subcommittees. One that will focus on the policy side and the implementation side of the broadband issues, and the other that will focus on more of the technical aspects, more of the nitty-gritty of, you know, what that looks like in terms of delivering the technology, that sort of thing. So, we will be working to fill out those groups in the next couple of months. In the meantime, we're going to continue to work on the implementation standards, start the process of what, mapping and identifying the needs. So, we'll be putting out an RFP for a firm to do mapping and identify the gaps, and figure out what the strategy is there. That'll be happening in January. And then we'll start engaging with them in earnest in March of, of next year. So, that's the brief update. Of course, if anybody has any questions or feedback on that process, we'll, we'll keep you updated. I'm going to have Jenny send this draft plan to everybody so you can take a look at it, and have a copy of that, and follow along with the work that we're doing. So, just wanted to share that with you today.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So, last night, we had the legislative, I mean, the LRE Substance Abuse Advisory Meeting, and this has always been a pet peeve of mine. The meeting was delayed because we didn't have a quorum. And whether you are a commissioner or a community member that serves on something that you're appointed, it's, it's important to be there. I mean, there were things that we needed passed, and we needed the quorum, so I just do a shout-out to kind of keep that in mind. So, anyways, the meeting itself, I guess we talked a lot about opioids. I guess great news that meth use in the region is up 6 percent. And, you know, that's kind of staggering. And this all goes to our policies on drugs, addiction, and it's, it's frustrating. It seems to be a never-ending battle. But the two things I do want to point out, and maybe we shouldn't sit together anymore. Commissioner Bolkowski pointed out a couple things about sports gaming, and I don't know who in the state thought this was a good idea, but once again, it was driven by, look at all the money we're going to get, and all the good things that we're going to get. Well, the calls to the hotline have skyrocketed. So, we have now have people that feel that betting on sports is more important than putting food on the table. These ongoing policies by our legislator and governments, and it's always driven by, look at the money we're going to be bringing in, and all the good things that we're doing. Well, this is how we're spending it. You can also look at, to the legalization of marijuana. Now, I've always been supportive of medical uses and research of that, and finding different ways to get meds, to control pain, that aren't relying on pharmaceuticals. But I think the legalization was just a step that, you know, I just couldn't buy into. And we were all told, well, this is going to be good, you know, we're going to be responsible, you know, you know, this is going to be not the big bad thing that it is. Well, one of our surveys that we did on youth between, I think, 13 and 17, yes, there's an uptick of marijuana use in that age group. And when they asked the secondary question of, why are you smoking marijuana, the first response was, because we see our parents doing it, so it must be okay. So, I mean, this long battle with addiction and, and drug use, it's, it's, it's never-ending, and we're spending so much money, of taxpayer money, that could be directed in different and better ways. And, you know, these are here forever. I mean, you only have to watch television, you don't have to listen to the radio where this FanDuel or whatever it is, I mean, they're all doing the same thing. We'll give you 50 bucks for signing up. If you get a friend, they'll get 50 bucks, then you'll get 50 bucks, and your first bet up to 2,000 won't cost you anything. At the end of the day, these folks are in making money, and it's big money, and it's destroying a lot of lives. And what is really frustrating is, is that these ads run constantly on the radio stations and our television stations, who won't do a report on the problem of gambling, because they themselves are receiving millions and millions of dollars in advertising. And this is wrong, and it's time for leaders in the communities that were these damaging things that are occurring, is that we stand up and make a stand. Thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I just wanted to make a report that I had approached the prosecutor's office about creating a website for expungements for people who couldn't afford an attorney, because I researched the way that they could do it for practically free. And the prosecutor's office, Kent County Prosecutor's Office, agreed. That is now complete, and it is up on the prosecutor's office website. And I'm very humbled that they did include me on the website as a collaborator of this expungement. So, that's, that's one of the things I wanted to report. Also, this week, I had a chance to talk to our Lieutenant Governor about a program called Job Court. I've also had a chance to talk to the prosecutor's office, and we'll be meeting with them. Job Court is a situation where people who have nonviolent crimes, things like child support, things that may bring them to court because of their lack of an opportunity for employment, and we know there's so many jobs... Uh, Job Court is a situation where people who have nonviolent crimes, things like child support, things that may bring them to court because of their lack of an opportunity for employment. And we know there are so many jobs now that are begging for employees, that it may fix two situations. If judges are allowed to send these people to a job, and if they stay on that job a year or more, their, um, their, um, charges would be dropped. So, we're just exploring into that, making sure that it's not going to be any type of cost that's going to fall upon the county. The state has said they, they have started to fund job courts throughout also. So that was, I guess, a few things I wanted to update and, and that's a report.
Any other official committee reports before we move to miscellaneous? Commissioner Burrow?
Uh, yes. Uh, I have the privilege of chairing the Veterans' Millage Renewal Committee. And we'll be, uh, hopefully holding our first meeting next week, uh, with various stakeholders and, and myself and staff, uh, helping out with that and a couple of the commissioners. So looking forward to expanding some possible uses. Money's, uh, from that millage is going back in our general fund because they're tied. We can only use them on, on so many things. So, looking forward to expanding those, uh, veterans', uh, uses and the help and areas that they need.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, also wanted to, uh, talk about a subcommittee, Judicial Resources Subcommittee. Um, we're hoping to have our first meeting on December sixteenth, since we're not going to be meeting as a board. Um, working with staff to get that finalized and scheduled, so, uh, keep an eye out for the notice if you're interested in attending.
Any other official reports today? All right, seeing none, we will move on to miscellaneous. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, on this, uh, conclusion of seventeen years of work as chair, um,
Those dog ears, yeah.
I, I just, I just want to express my appreciation. The, uh, the three years that you've been chair have been extraordinary in many ways. And that, that's led to, you know, a, a lot of work, uh, for the chair. And we can be a, uh, a difficult bunch sometimes, and you're always, you've always been accessible and engaged, and I just want to say, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to echo what, uh, Commissioner Coleman said. Um, Madam Chair, you've been a great friend of mine over the years and a mentor in many ways, and it's been a privilege to work with you, um, in this capacity. My new role as a commissioner this year and you as chair, um, one thing I keep coming back to over the last two years, um, as a person of faith, I firmly believe in our community and elsewhere that, um, the right people are put in leadership positions during challenging times for a reason. Um, and certainly I feel that way about you. Um, not an easy road to hoe as chair. Um, and, uh, I really appreciate, uh, the work that you've done to keep us all growing in the same direction, keep our county, uh, moving forward in a time when it was really difficult to do. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Bukowski, are you guys going to try to make me cry or?
We're going to work on it. Um, first, uh, real quick, Al, um, the quadrant meetings, awesome idea. Um, please send the dates and the maps as soon as you can, because some of our schedules fill fast. Mandy, yes, thank you so much, um, for your leadership, your open ears and all that you've done to keep us, um, moving forward. Um, and because you've always been open to hearing my harebrained ideas, um, I just have a supposal for us to think over the next month that, um, you know, we're going to get potentially five hundred fifteen thousand dollars for the opioid settlement. And I'm going to bet a lot of money illegally, um, that,
No betting.
Sorry, no betting, that one of the, one of the allowable uses will not be to lobby, um, for systems change. However, as our finance director showed us earlier today, he can know how to move money around. And as, as Commissioner Ponsting pointed out, we're already paying for this stuff, so we don't need another clinic. So let's just make sure we can use this five hundred fifteen thousand for things we're already doing. And the freed up money, we can do five hundred fifteen thousand dollars on some good policy reform and advocacy. Let's change this system. Let's invest in that as opposed to Band-Aids. I go on, but we've gone on. Thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of things. Um, one, um, I think they've gotten a, a bad rap today, but I want to thank the lawyers. Uh, which, which I left out, I know, it's a shocker, uh, which I, uh, I left out of my comments about the,
Steck's not even here to,
The settlements, I know, he'll have to, have to watch the video. I actually have it written down here.
Yeah.
But, uh,
Two attorneys.
In seriousness, Linda, I know that this was a lot of work on the opioid settlement. Um, I know we've been talking about it for, for going back on years. And I appreciate everything that you did to get us to this point. Um, and also to our outside counsel who's gone. And, um, and I did lean over and thank Stan, but, um, you know, a lot of that work on the, on fixing the issues with the clinic was because of Stan Stack. And so, you know, here's to the lawyers. Um, number two, um, again, the, uh, the nineteenth district, the District of Champions, um, has a, a new champion. That's the D-three East Grand Rapids girls swim team. Uh, five years in a row, seven out of the last eight, uh, although the first one without a Skaggs daughter on the team for, for that period of time. So, congratulations to those girls, um, parents and, and the legendary coach Butch Briggs. Um, speaking of congratulations for sporting events and for betting, um, congratulations, uh, to the Michigan football team for their big win over the school down south.
Go Blue!
And especially to, uh, to Kent County's own Mazzy Smith, who, uh, certainly prevented, uh, a great deal of yards against that defense. And then, uh, lastly, um, you know, thank you, Mandy. Um, I think that Commissioner Coleman got it wrong. It seems like it's been more like thirty-five years. Um, I know that I had, uh, fewer wrinkles and no gray hairs when this all started. Um, I appreciate, uh, all the work that you've done. Uh, I've got to see, uh, more of that work. Um, and, and it's been a pleasure working with you, um, and watching you work. Um, I know I've been probably the easiest of the, the eighteen cats to herd. Um, but on behalf of those that have been more difficult, thank you so much.
Commissioner Ponsting?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So, I'll try to start out with good news and end with bad news or however that goes. Uh, like, like Al, I want to extend my thanks. Um, I know I made comments during the Legislative Committee about the passing of my mother. Uh, she lived a great life. She lived her faith. She was a hundred percent Polish and lived that life too. So, um, I know a lot of you sent cards. I appreciate that. Dropped a note, even called. Uh, were surprised not to see me at the visitation, but a, a positive test, put an end to me attending, uh, the services. So, the, the, the cards are meaningful, and I just wanted to thank you for that. So, to start out, Mandy, thank you. Uh, everyone's saying it seems like thirty-two years or eleven or twelve. It seems like just yesterday that we started this. Uh, you did a great job. There was a lot of challenges. I know it took a toll on you and your personal and your work life, so, uh, I don't think people see that, that, uh, some of the sacrifices that elected officials undertake in order to deliver the services that are needed. So, thank you. So, second of all, uh, I've got an old friend, Carl Pegnelli. Uh, I got, I got to know him when I was, uh, in high school in Granville, and he was at Rogers'. And he's got a family full of NFL, uh, referees in there. He lost his wife to cancer some time back here, and each year, he has a raffle for a nonprofit, Faith Hospice. You can go to their website, faithhospice.com. He always donates, uh, two Super Bowl tickets. Uh, he pays for accommodations and, and other things. So, if you want a chance to win that and support a great organization, Faith Hospice, just check them out on their website. Uh, I'm sure Carl and his whole family that receive services from them would be appreciative of that. Um, number three, so I was in Lansing the other day for, I don't know, from six in the morning, I left, uh, till well into the evening. Uh, I went around talking to legislators, and no, I just didn't speak to the Republicans. Uh, uh, it was bipartisan. Mac had brought a group of people together, a group called the Michigan Prosperity Roadmap, which has got probably forty to fifty different organizations, nonprofits, included the governmental units to try to get the legislature to move on the ARPA funds. And there's a lot of challenges there, a lot of things that I heard, uh, where is, there's not a lot of trust. Uh, and everyone wants to move slow, uncertainty, uh, but there's a time limit on these, and we got to get it out. So we tried to lobby as much as we can to start that. Uh, I had a meeting with Curtis Hurtel, Senator, and, uh, he had said what we got to do, and he's working with Stamas and Vanderwall and others to try to get one part of it through. Not the whole package, but to stop the mistrust between the legislature and the governor and the bickering back and forth is if they can show that we can pass something and get it through, and it stays intact of what the meaning is, that's going to help push the rest of it along. No one's really positive or that a lot of this is going to get done anytime soon. Uh, I know there's a water resource package that's trying to be worked through this week, and, uh, public safety is also. Though those might be the two trial balloons that they try to get through in this time period. So, keep your fingers crossed. Uh, it was great conversation. It was a great meeting. Uh, most of the people I met were former county commissioners, so, uh, so I appreciated their time. And, and it was a bipartisan effort. We were welcome in both offices, and it was, uh, it was a welcome change. So, next on my list, well, I'll add, the four-year terms, I'm sure you're all on the edge of the seats. Uh, this has been something that's been pushed. I don't see it coming back if, if it doesn't get through this session here. The vote today in the House is expected to pass. There is some dissension. Uh, a couple of legislators told me, so you know Stan's just going to give commissioners a free shot at the state reps. And I just kind of looked at him and I said, you know, you shouldn't flatter yourself, because I don't know many county commissioners that want to be state reps. So, we're hopeful. We've got word from the governor's office. If it gets to her table, she will sign that. So, uh, we'll see how that goes. Next, uh, we always hear things that happen all over the country. And, uh, uh, something that happened in our county, which, I can't say I'm surprised it's going to happen, but we've spent millions and billions of dollars during this COVID crisis, propping up our airlines, supporting our airports, to make sure it remains viable. But for me to hear on the radio that we had passengers on an airplane, sitting on our tarmac for two and a half hours, is unacceptable. And I think the response from the airport was, well, we really have nothing to do with it. We, there was nothing that we could do. And then the response from the airline was, oh, we had no workers at the gate. Those are all excuses, and those people on that plane deserve better from us. Uh, all those jetways are identical. And you need to tell me that there isn't an emergency plan that someone from another airline can at least get that gate and the plane to the gate, so those people can at least get off the plane. Uh, I didn't hear any of that. I just heard the excuses. I didn't hear that this isn't going to happen again, because at the end of the day, those people on the plane, they were reinforced about one thing, that most people think this is just Mayberry RFD, and we've got a air, airport in the middle of a cornfield. Uh, that's, that's got to end. Those people that were on that plane deserve better, and I want to apologize for everything that they went through, because I'm sure it wasn't a big jet. It was one of those that have a quarter inch of leg room. So, with that, uh, I'll just end by saying, uh, Merry Christmas. I know there's people in the county that don't celebrate it. Uh, there are other celebrations, other holidays. I just hope that everyone can get together with family. Uh, give them that hug that you haven't given them, because you never know when they're not going to be there anymore. And, uh, just keep in mind that if it was safe to watch U of M kick OSU's butt with a hundred and ten thousand people unmasked, cheering, and jumping around in joy, which was great, you can meet in person in your home and spend some time with the family. So, thank you.
Chair Bolter, you know, I just wanted to piggyback off of Ben's comments a while ago. Um, the right person, the right time. I appreciate your leadership. I've known you for the last fifteen, twenty years. It's been great to work with you. Um, you definitely live and breathe this job, and I think you're, you're well-deserved of a little break and some free time from all of us tracking you down at all hours of the day and night, morning. Um, but thank you so much for the, the love you have for Kent County, the work you've put in, and, um, all the time you've shared. Thanks.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I would like to, uh, just start by, uh, first thanking all our new commissioners for their first year of service. Uh, Commissioner McLeod, Commissioner Barreil, Commissioner LaGranne, Commissioner Green, just, um, just all of the new ideals and creativity and, um, conversations that I've had with all of the new commissioners. Just want to welcome you and congratulate you on your first year. Also, uh, thanking, uh, Stan Pointstein, Commissioner Pointstein, and Administrator Vanderburg for with all that you've been going through at the end of this year, uh, just continuing to be strong for the, um, for the county here at the board and continuing to do your service and your work. Um, Altor, I always beat him up because he's always whining, but it's, it's the end of the year, so I'm going to give him an early holiday gift. I'm, I'm going to thank him and other commissioners that did bring the Delta Plex to our, um, attention, because the Delta Plex, uh, hasn't been mentioned, but they did some great things in the vaccination when it came to the veterans. And, uh, that, that was a great addition. Um, and just want to say congratulations to Mandy Bolter for being our chair. Right person, right time, and may I add, the right place. Here at Kent County is where we needed you. And just want to let you know, totally appreciated you as our chair. And thank you for all those extra hours you put in. I don't know how many hours a chair is supposed to put in, but I can tell you, I know you've had some twenty-hour days. So, thank you very much, Chair Bolter.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I too. For all the reasons already cited, Mandy, I thank you for, I know it's been really tough, very, very difficult. And I think being on the other side of this now, the grass is going to be greener, and the air is going to be cleaner, and everything's going to feel like a brand-new day. Um, Commissioner Ponsting mentioned, uh, Carl Pegnelli. He was actually my catcher back in co, college, and I did know his, his wife was sick. And, uh, I was sorry to hear that she passed away.
Yeah, that's years ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that family, the Pegnelli family, I think they have three or maybe four family members that are NFL referees.
Father who was a administrator who knew my father.
Yep, that's, that's right. It, just one more comment about the people being stuck on the airplane. Um, I'm old enough to remember back in the day when everybody was taking off airplanes out on the infield. They didn't have the way they do it now. You'd, they'd all walk off the plane, come across. Um, that was just common back in the day. And I'm just wondering why it's so difficult to do that in an emergency, just get people off the plane. I, I, I'm, you know, stymied as to why they wouldn't do that. So that, that is a great question. That's all I had.
Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I first just briefly want to, uh, wish everyone a, a happy Christmas and holiday season. And, uh, to those observing, a happy fifth night of Hanukkah. Um, and, uh, you know, on top of that, I, I, I sur, I, I will contribute to trying to get Commissioner Bolter to, uh, cheer up a little bit and, and thank her for her amazing three years. Um, you know, it was in the fall of twenty eighteen, just after the election, that I got a text message from a number I did not know, and it was Commissioner Bolter, asking to sit down and, and, uh, get to know each other as I was going to be starting in the coming term, uh, with her first term as chair. Um, and, uh, you know, in that first year, uh, a lot of what we worked on was talking about animals and dogs and me annoying her about pace and, uh, housing. Um, and then, early on in twenty twenty, this pandemic came off and, or came into our community and, uh, shifted everyone's attention and especially our chair's attention towards getting millions of dollars in CARES Act money out the door in meaningful ways that could help people in this community weather the storm, uh, creating a, a premier partnership to, at the DeVos place, to, to get people vaccinated as quickly as they could, and to ramp up the infrastructure here so that people could resume their lives in a safe and effective way. And then, finding a new administrator, uh, you know, for, as I've looked past back in other tenures of chairs, usually they have one issue like that to deal with. She had three, if not four or five and half a dozen. And it, uh, certainly is true that the right person for that right time was chosen. And if there's one last, mo, one last thing I, I truly have to be appreciative of, it's how you have sought to increase board participation and board direction and board empowerment in your three years. direction and board empowerment in your three years. We are the elected officials. We're the ones who have to answer to our constituents. And I certainly have been appreciative of the work session processes that have been created, the board retreats that have allowed us to help set a stronger strategic vision for Kent County, so that we can represent our constituents well. And while a brief three years, I do believe there will be a meaningful three years in the history of this county. So thank you very, very much, and enjoy your break from this role. And thankfully, you, you know, I hope Commissioner Steck, the best of luck in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you, Mandy Bolter, for being our chair and doing such a wonderful job of it. You're, as was just said, you're networking with all of us, the respect that you accorded to each and every one of us, the time you spent. It's amazing. And, you know, it's a lot of care for the, in respect for the elected officials. There's a lot of care and respect for the staff in Kent County and for the people who live here. And it's all appreciated. I have so many favorite moments of conversations with you, but I have to, I'm going to mention one, and that was...
Don't get me in trouble. We used to have some lively conversations.
Well, this actually was more, anyhow, I received a text message in the middle of the night once, and she said, are you awake? Well, you know what? I was. And we began, we got out our coffee. She sat by her fireplace. I sat by mine. And we just started, you know, just communicating a little bit. But, I mean, but that's the way in which she just never stopped working and communicating and solving, solving the situations as they arose. And it's just so greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Burl.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Mandy, for this past year as a new commissioner and trying to build relationships with individuals that proved to be difficult in the first six months, being on Zoom, not being able to converse with a lot of you, except maybe over the phone. You always took my phone call, and if you couldn't take it, you called me back. And of course, and a lot of times, maybe it was just venting and letting me, you know, you're listening to what I had to vent about, and maybe pacify me a little bit, and we move on. And again, you get me on the phone, I am going to be a talker. And I'm not sure if I'm the only one that way, but if you had to deal with 18 other commissioners like that, and if those phone calls are all 20, 30 minutes plus, and on vacations, I know there were many times you were out of town with your family, which I truly did appreciate that. So again, thank you for, again, making it a little easier for this first year, when, again, it did prove to be difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other, we're good?
I'd like to go last. So real quick, it was a tradition that the board chair always put together kind of the accomplishments for the year. So unfortunately, I slacked this year because we aren't doing our last meeting and didn't get a chance to do that for this meeting, but you will be getting something at the end of the year. Real quick, I do want to mention Sangita and all your work on the opioid issue. I am told you put hours and hours and hours in, and so thank you so much for all of that work. I want to acknowledge the Oxford community and the losses there. It's pretty tough to take your teenage kid to school the next day when that happens. And I just, in our prayers, hope we find ways to figure this out, because we've got to do something to continue to protect those kids. I think it starts with mental health. But anyway, back to this time, a few highlights, quick projects. And I know we're going long, so I will try to be quick. But just, I sat down this morning. I tried to not go through and do a formal review of everything. I just tried to sit down and think of what pops into my head as some of the things that were important, and I think we did not only this year, but in my three years, that just, I'm going to rattle them off. The vaccine clinic, you brought two opposing hospitals together with the health department, and we figured it out. And I think my proudest moment, one of my proudest moments was having my, both Republicans and Democrats, it was the one time we came together and backed each other up, and were unified, because we were helping on making sure that this community was going to get vaccinated and vaccinated quickly so that we could all get back to work. And I really, Commissioner Skaggs, I will say, I really appreciated you especially backing me up on that when we had some challenges with the, with the then-former appointee of that, of that board. The three CIP projects that we were able to pay cash for, that are shovel-ready and getting going, was great. The Tree Grove, that I can't wait to go see all the time. AAA bond rating, both agencies, three times through a pandemic, was incredible. I always got nervous. I always had Roger Morgan in my head. Don't screw it up, but he didn't say. So going into a pandemic year on Zoom, trying to get bond rating was a little nerve-wracking. But we did it. And that's a testament to Jeff and his team and all that hard work. Airport expansion, finally got the ACOs, the animal control officers moved over to the sheriff. Thank you so much for taking that on. I know you did not want to do that, but I really was hoping you would. And I appreciate you doing that. Restoring funding for the West Michigan Partnership for Children, that is huge. I don't even know if everyone really realizes how important that is. I hope they don't defund that, but I hope if they do, that you all pick up that mantle and make sure they don't. Wi-Fi in parks, again, appreciate all of the help we had to back that up. It was a heavy lift. Parks acquisition, thank you Sam Moore and Dan for being so awesome and what you do there. Our Bonding for a Road Commission, our Veterans Treatment Court, our Lead Action Task Force, being able to go in homes and still help mitigate and still help get these kids tested and get their treatment through a pandemic was a testament to Adam London. Waiving the restaurant fee was huge. I hope we can do that again, Commissioner Ponstein. I know that you will champion that. But that was big, and I can't tell you, the little fee that they didn't have to pay meant so much to so many restaurants in our community. Body cams for deputies was huge, especially last year and what occurred. And our sheriff stepped up right away and made sure that it was a priority, and it was a priority for us, and we got it done. The Chamber, you know, the business grants, them stepping up to do that. Nap Drain is finally going to get done, I think. The Crisis Center, unfortunately, Commissioner Steck is not here. He waited out my patience. I finally couldn't take it anymore and called Uncle, but I was on that for two or three years, and it's taken five, but we're finally getting there. And then, you know, probably lastly, well, second to last, the new administrator. I really do feel that if I've done anything, I've set us on a really good path with Al. I am so, so thankful. I was so, so nervous. Sam was there for that, when, you know, I didn't know if we would have someone. And I actually did thank, literally thanked God for you to come over and help us, because it was a scary time. This is an important community. And then lastly, CARES, I think it nearly killed us all. I think we were going to stroke out at one point. I want to specifically thank especially Commissioner Steck, Brevee Jones, Morgan Ponstein, Talon Skaggs, and Womack for hanging in and letting me drag you through every other week, multiple-hour meetings, to get our arms around the needs of this community and get that funding out. That was just an incredible lift. You know, Cal Brink's putting together, when we couldn't find PPE, and our logistics guy pulling together, you know, using our buying power and putting packages together for businesses and getting that done in the quickest way possible. Money for nonprofits, money for homeless shelter, all the things we did with CARES. I hope you all review that report, which I did this morning, and someday look back on what you did, because it was huge. And then, of course, the board approval of all that we recommended, without question. You didn't question us. You didn't, you just, you just went with us and you trusted us, and that was huge. You know, I want to, lastly, you know, I look at the board, and probably one of my regrets was not being able to get closer to our new, our new board members, Dan and Michelle and Melissa, partially because of Zoom, but I hope to continue to build those relationships. And I, you know, I look, there's days when I, you know, it gets to miscellaneous, and I look around to see who wants to speak up. And when I look to my left, I'm trying to not cry. It's just a real point of pride to see Ben and Lindsay sitting there, because I've known them since they got out of college, and I've watched their careers. And having them sit here, share the dais, it's just kind of the next generation coming through. So that's just a really important thing for me. I'm wrapping it up, I promise. I hope that the bipartisanship doesn't leave with me. I think that's really what sets us apart as a county. And we are the top four largest counties, and we don't act like it. We are a bipartisan board. It's pretty split, and we figure it out. I hope someday we can look at the percentage of split votes. I think most of them are unanimous. Two last things, I want to thank the staff for everything, putting up with me. I know for a fact, they would see my name pop up on their cell phones and roll their eyes and dread it. And it was a lot. I especially want to thank Linda. Linda and I didn't always agree multiple times, but she was there, and she was my crutch for a lot of things, and I really, really, really appreciate it. And lastly, I want to thank Sam Moore for all of his help and his innovative ideas and guidance. I don't think I could have done it without him. And I especially could not have done it without my husband and Hayden and Hudson. And I want to thank them for all that time. And lastly, it's kind of funny, when you mentioned all the time and the phone calls, my kids would have a fun game where you all were on speaker, so they all knew what issues we were debating at any time. And they would have a guessing game of which commissioner it was. And typically, they were right. So that's how much time we were on the phone. So with that, I would call in Commissioner Burl for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Monday, January the 3rd, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Moved by Burl, support by Brevee. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.
Support by everybody.